Betty's session would have been a good one. That's what we're still going to go through again.
PowerPoint was pretty helpful to me, too.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. Jacobs?
Here.
Lund? Watts?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Triple of the minutes?
With your approval.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund? Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes. All right, and then we have a presentation, sewer rate presentation by Patrick Young and Amanda Bagwell of HGR Engineering.
Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Mayor Bagwell from HGR today to present on the 2018 Sewer Rate Study. If you remember, last year we changed from our original rate plan, which was a volume rate plan, and went to the fixed rate point. And so now, we're going to look at a five-year plan for the fixed rate plan.
All right, we're going to hand out copies of the presentation for you. Let's make it a little easier than following along. Thank you for having us back again this year, we appreciate it. We're going to start this evening by going over, reminding you what was adopted last year, and talking about what the basis of that rate adjustment was, and then following it up with the results of this year for you. So last year, as Matthew mentioned, you guys decided Lou was doing a volume charge and a fixed charge increase. You increased the fixed charge from $9 to $11.50. The reason of that was because you've seen a lot of water conservation efforts in recent years, and your consumption numbers were down. So what this did is it brought your fixed charge up to a more equitable rate, and it balanced those numbers. And it also balanced between your residential and your commercial customers. So what this was based on was a 2016 recommended rate schedule. As you can see, in 2018, you know, we had assumed that we would do a volume bench increase. As we said, this changed. But the important thing to note was that we were trying to keep a level increase of about 5% annually on that, just to keep the shock value down on the customers. So this was based on a plan. I won't bore you by going into every number here, but the important thing to note is that we were stepping up funding of your depreciation. Your total depreciation is about 1.45 million. Instead of funding that in the first year, we were, you know, doing adjustments each year. And the other thing is that we were also offsetting your cost for your capital improvements with those depreciation funds that you're collecting. And so as you can see, for the most part, you know, you have a couple of years where you have to draw on reserves, but your plan intended to maintain a fairly steady fund balance annually. So that you have some background, I will talk about this year's rate review. So the first step that we did is we looked at billings. Where were you compared to what we based the rate design on last year? For the monthly number of bills, we looked at your billings through April, and then we projected through the rest of the year. And you were actually up a little bit on your monthly number of bills. Then it equates to about roughly 20 more customers than we had assumed previously. And average monthly consumption was up just slightly. So that lets us know that our plan is pretty much on track. And the rate adjustments that you guys did last year is generating that revenue that we want. As you can see, it's slightly higher than what we were hoping to get. And from what Matthew tells me, the outlook might even be better than what we have projected in here. So it's good news. So the next piece is then to look at your budgets. We compared what the original budget versus your amended budget, and then what's proposed for 2019. For the most part, you guys are pretty set on from what was done previously. You have a slight increase in your resource agreement fund. Collections went up, not collections, I'm sorry, capital improvements went up. You've got some major CFP projects that are coming down the pipe. And the other important thing to note is that we're fully funding depreciation. And the plan that I showed you earlier showed that being stepped up. This is showing that you're fully funding it that first year. So what does that mean for the forecast for next year? What we did is we started with the base case, which is pretty much in line with what was done previously on that schedule that I showed you, where we're stepping up the depreciation, we're not fully funding it that first year, and you're utilizing that depreciation numbers to offset your capital improvements projects. That keeps us aligned with that 5% increase. And we're showing a fairly positive net balance and actually building on reserves in the later years. The next thing we did is a slight adjustment. We said, okay, so what's the forecast if we decide to fully fund your depreciation in 2019? And offset your capital improvements with those depreciation funds. And you can see, we have some deficits in the first couple of years. We're pulling from reserves to cover those, to keep those rate adjustments down. But you're basically looking at doing a big jump for next year, and then it levels out to that 5% annually. So then we took it one step further, and we said, okay, what if you fully fund depreciation, and you don't use it to cover your capital improvements projects? You fund those to cash instead. Just to look at what that impact in that forecast is, so as you can see, the depreciation line item, we've got the 1.45 billion across the board. You're looking at having to do a 25% increase in that first year, next year, 2019, and then follow that with a 10%. And then after that, you're pretty set, and you can keep it pretty well at like a 1% adjustment. And you build a healthy fund balance of about a million. So now that I begin you those scenarios, what we would recommend is that you don't fund depreciation the first year. That you keep to the original schedule, you step it up, you fund your capital improvements through your depreciation funds. And then you start really trying to build reserves for future projects. And we know that there's some major waste or achievement plan improvement projects that are on the horizon. If we're looking at capacity improvements, especially the East Plant in 25 years. And when MD and R and EPA finally come to a consensus on nutrient limits, we know that you're going to see regulatory changes in total phosphorus and total nitrogen in the future. So we basically broke that down, and we came up with three alternative rate adjustments that we proposed that are all able to be supported by the utility. The first one is just a 50% increase on that fixed charge. What that does is it takes the monthly bill for the average residential user from $40.30 to $41.31. That's roughly a 2.5% increase. Alternative two takes it up to $12.50, so a $1.50 increase on that fixed charge. That takes the average residential bill, monthly bill, to $41.81. And then we've got alternative three, which is $13, which is a $1.50 increase. And that has an average monthly bill of $42.31. And that's at that 5% increase, which was on the original proposed plan. Without open adoption, questions?
So what's that do with the commercials? I think you've got residential, right?
Yeah, we just looked at what the impact on the residential. So the commercial will see an increase too, but you're big users, obviously, looking at impacts. But if that's something that you want to see, I can take some of the average commercial users around town and show you what the impact on that is.
Because I think last year we had a one, two, and a three, but that also shows what we did with the commercial and the residential. So it kind of helped to make that decision that time, too.
I would definitely want to know what the impact is on commercials.
Yes, please.
Do we know when we increased these? Was there any increase in calls to City Hall? Did anybody? You didn't hear anything?
It was pretty much business as usual. Changing the fixed rate did increase the amount of revenue that we received. Unlike changing the volume charge, where it's kind of a steady income, it never really changed. So this did put us in a position where we can do some extra maintenance and other scheduled things around the plants that we needed to do.
How many fixed charges for commercial calculated?
Same way as SCADA.
But then you use the same numbers?
Yes, well, the less than one inch is, and then the others are ratioed out.
But you need to bear in mind, what we're changing here is the fixed rate, not the volume rate.
Right.
And the volume rate is where the commercial is going to be hit really hard, because they use a lot more water. If you're on the fixed rate, they're not going to feel that heavy as much, because that's a fixed monthly cost.
Because I know when I started council, it was like $5, my dad's, and then it went to nine, and now it's going to go to 12.
I mean, I like the idea of, you know, of the smaller, the $1.50, because, you know, people aren't going to, they'll feel a $1.50, but it's not going to be a shocker compared to what KCPNL has done to us, the water companies have been attempting to do to us. You know, I mean, you know, we're looking at some pretty brutal numbers from those companies compared to this. This is inflation, a $1.50 is inflation. I mean, and I can swallow that, you know.
Yeah, and especially compared to some of the other communities, too, like especially City of Kings City, City of Independence. You know, they had consent decrees where they were doing, you know. I think Kings City, their estimate is a $1.00 improvement that they have to fund. So they did 15% increases for years. Independence, you know, they had $90 million, $24 million in improvements that they have at least.
What do the capital improvement numbers, what are they telling us? I mean, is that programmed, or?
Next year, we have SCADA system to be in.
Okay.
Another plant bed at the East Plant.
Okay.
You know, we are still looking at the future of the SBR basin at the East Plant.
Okay.
About 76% of that one.
So that's what those numbers are representing?
We won't add another basin next year.
Right.
That SCADA system is 300,000 or so.
We've also got the UNE disinfection that we have, we have to operate it.
Both places?
Both plants, fire and water manufacturers. Units that we're at, up there.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any feeling or direction from council that we want to go? I mean, the staff's going to have to start preparing some information to bring forward through the process. So it'd be helpful if we had a general idea of what council would like to do.
I would be comfortable with alternative three here. I would like to know what that impact is on the commercial side, though, before I vote it on it, but I would be comfortable with alternative three.
We will have the hearing on it at the next council meeting, or would you like me to bring those numbers in?
Yes.
Yeah, the one thing I was calculating, too, Matthew, that I, maybe I'm just missing it on here, is the total increase, if we go to alternative number three, what that total increase is from where we actually were in 18. Does that make sense?
The average dollar or?
So actual increase in 2018, or I'm sorry, not increase, actual fiscal year 18 revenue was 4,269,800. So I was looking at what the, how much the city would gain off of alternative number three.
That's on page nine.
Okay.
Yeah, that number has the interest of roughly about 300,000. So I think it was about 4.5, 4.6, so we're calculating.
So which number am I looking at if I'm on page nine, and I want to see what the total increase would be? So from where we are right now.
Yeah, so it's your rate revenue, so.
So my finger is stuck right here.
Yeah, so that's your total revenue. So if you do this one, it's that minus the 300,000, the 382.
Why is that the miscellaneous? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, this is just your total revenue. So that's your rate revenue plus your miscellaneous. So to know what your total that you're collecting from the sewer rates is, you would take the 5,49,000 minus the, this number stays the same, and that's your interest on your SRF loan. So, and your permits and.
Okay, so this is already what the projected income was supposed to be for 2019. And then if we go with alternative number three, we're looking at this.
Correct.
Yeah, is that right?
Yeah, it gets confusing, because you're kind of like doing circular references with your numbers.
Sure.
Well, not to go in too much depth, but I know a lot of times bookkeeping, you want line by line. What's miscellaneous revenue?
So it's some of your, what you collect from permits, what you collect from delinquencies, what you collect from interest on your SRF.
Okay.
That's the big portion of the interest on your SRF.
I think here's where I'm confused.
Right.
I'm sorry. The total revenue for 2019 shows 5,88,500. But then with alternative number three, you're looking at 5,49,000. So that's less, though, with an increase.
So this is back to what I was saying about circular references and fun numbers. So this was based on just doing a 5% increase on the total. We knew that we had to have a rate adjustment and do 5%. It was looking for your baseline and generally what you can expect. This was actually calculated based on your numbers, so.
So is it safe to say on page 14, alternate three, we have the total revenue is 5,049,000?
Yeah.
You would sub that number in on page nine, or 2019, as a 4,706,310, if it is your rate revenue.
Okay, and then you could still add miscellaneous to that.
You'll still add miscellaneous, yeah. So the difference would be the 5,49,000 minus the 4.7 million, so it's about.
Which is the point, which is that 0.2%? Because this is figured on 5%, this is figured on 4.8%.
Yeah, so it differs slightly.
Is there a reason behind, I mean, I know alternative one says 272 for zero to two, and then we go alternative two, and alternative three, and it drops to 270. Is there a reason why we discounted that two cents, or is that just a misinterpretation?
Yeah, that might be, I'm probably fat fingering that, so I'll take this likelihood for that. Yeah, I apologize for that.
No problem.
Did you guys get what you were from us?
So you want us to prepare paperwork for the public hearing on alternate three?
Yes, that's my opinion at least.
I would have said, too.
I agree.
We're good.
Thank you. Oh, my math skills were good until we started talking sewer. Okay, next we have a public hearing. A public hearing on an ordinance establishing an LI, Light Industrial District, for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Route 13, Highway, and Veterans Road.
Mayor, City Council, at your last council meeting on July 11th, you had a hearing concerning annexing this property, and is this the property that the Dollar Tree Distribution Center facility is located on? If that is successful later this evening and is annexed into the city, the request is to zone that property light industrial. The property to the south, all the way to Highway 50, is also zone light industrial. And you can see that in the map that's in your packet as well. That is consistent with your comprehensive city plan, which shows that area for light industrial. We've advertised the hearing, and we had one contact from Steven Lyle, who owns property to the north, and he called to ask what land exactly was being zoned light industrial, since it is owned by the city by means of the Chapter 100 bonds. That confused people who got the notices. And so they just wanted to verify that it was in fact that property. And when we stated it was, he said he was okay with that. If I had no other contact, I'm aware. Staff would recommend approval for the reasons stated in the statement before.
You said the remainder of it is also light industrial, the remainder of that to the.
To the south is the property that is also zoned light industrial. Off to the east is not inside the city limits.
Right. Okay, and nobody signed up for that, so we will close that public hearing. Next, we have first reading, an ordinance establishing minimum regulations governing the safeguarding of life and safety from fire and explosion hazards known as the Fire Prevention Code of the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri.
Mayor, members of the council, before you have the proposed ordinance with the local amendments that we have put in place, so that we recommend to, recommend to you upon acceptance of the 2018 code, which include what we talked about earlier this evening in the study session, along with the change in the food trucks, and along with several of the administration changes that are required annually every time we do this.
First reading out of a lot of these, any discussion that we need to do, or move on to the next one? Okay. Okay, thank you. The next one is first reading, an ordinance establishing minimum regulations governing the design, construction, alteration, enlargement, repair, demolition, removal, maintenance, and use of all buildings and structures known as the Building Code of the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. Brett?
We call that updating the building code. As Jim said, there in your packet, you do have the proposed ordinance to update the family of building hits from 2012 to 2018. Also included are the local amendments that we are proposing to adopt. Just a little bit about the process. We do this every six years. The ICC updates the building codes every three years. We skip the cycle. So the challenge for us when we update is we're actually bringing everybody up to speed. Two cycles, actually, is a little bit challenging. And to that end, we every six years put together a code update committee. And we go out into the community and try to get a broad array of professionals. And we get five of them, and then we get two alternates. We start meeting January 4th, and that every week, and we conclude it in May. So what you have before you with our, you asked earlier, there's eight of our codes, there's one ahead, so there's nine total. This is everything that our code update committee is basically giving you and proposing that that's what we would like to adopt. That, and again, as I said, the local amendments that we propose. I would like, if I could just recognize our code update committee, they put in a lot of hard work. Couple of them are here. Bobby Hall was our chair. Steve Higgins, those guys are here. Robert Rawlings, architect out of Sedalia, came all the way over here once a week. Tom Batts, electrician plumber. Donnie Brant, a home builder. Dan Spies was an alternate, and Jeff Terry were alternates. So I know you guys know who they are. And the city staff, which myself, Building Inspector Justin Wong, Josh Boone, Fire Emergency Prevention Officer, and Doyle Oxley, Fire Department. I think that's about all I had. Did you have any questions on that that we put forward? I have nothing on sprinklers?
Brett, one of your codes, I don't know if it's in this one, on the exterior disconnect?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is our local amendment that we proposed.
Right.
Yep.
Give me some rationale for that, will you?
Sure. The idea on the exterior disconnect, so that would be for all new single-family homes and all commercial buildings. The idea being, in the event of a fire, when our fire guys arrive, it's much easier at that point to have that single-point disconnect to shut the power down, rather than waiting for KCPNL, and you guys can talk about that process a little bit, to get there, to shut the power down. So the idea is we get it shut down immediately.
But it says it has to be secured, locked and secured.
Well, the idea of locking it, obviously, is so your neighbor doesn't shut you down just whenever they don't like you. But, you know, clearly, that's an easy way in, you know, to get through a lock. The alternative is pop in meter.
Yeah.
And I think your guys' policy is.
Personally, KCPNL, and probably for the last five-plus years, have been installing meters that are called inductor meters.
Right.
Pulling the meter doesn't turn off the electricity.
Just get full power, free power, right?
Right. The other, one of the other benefits to having it shut off is like storms have rolled through the other night. Several people had damage inside their houses because the power was, lines were crossing each other, and too much power was coming in the house. Shut it off there, stop the damage from entering into your house. It makes, if you want to run a generator for your house, much easier, you shut off the line power. It makes it easier for you to do improvements or your electric improvements to your house, because instead of calling KCPNL, and I believe the charge is $75 a trip right now, to turn your electricity off and turn it back on, you can go outside and turn it off, or your electrician can to work on your deal. As far as calling them in event of emergencies, we have wait times for KCPNL from 15 to five hours. 15 minutes to five hours waiting on them to get there, which normally means if somebody's had a babysit that problem, or we have live electricity operating in the house. And it's not just for fires, it could be a car into a house, there could be all sorts of reasons that this would benefit.
And we did have the KCPL rep in the meetings where we were discussing this.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, he's the guy a lot of times, and is going to be the guy that shows up. And he talked about that, that there's, you know, Saturday night, he might be 20 minutes out. So the idea, again, just goes back to say, get the power shut off as quick as possible. The second part of that, and I don't know if I get on that, for existing.
Right.
Structures, is when that service is upgraded or moved.
Right.
Okay, that's where the disconnect would be required. If we come out and just the mast has been damaged and needs to be repaired, but everything else is fine, there would be no requirement. But if for any reason we're upgrading that meter, or that meter has to be moved, because sometimes KCPL comes in our old house and says, that can't be there anymore. Say there was an incident, and say it was just with the mast. They'll come in and say, we're not hooking that up until that meter gets moved down to the other end of the house. Well, once you've moved it, you now have to put the disconnect on. So that's where it's required in the case of an existing structure.
Okay. I thought KCPNL required right now, if the secondary feed from the meter can to the first disconnect. disconnect exceeded 10 feet, isn't that...
We have what we call the 10-foot rule.
Yeah.
We currently have that, yeah. That would, we wrote that in to stay in effect, if that's the case in an existing, that would remain.
Okay.
But yes, they do. They have it. We have it written into our ordinance. And I think we wrote that in in '08, maybe.
Yeah, probably.
It was '06 or '08. But we have that also. But we incorporated that into this one, because we didn't want to, it wasn't a draw.
Okay.
So, yeah, they do.
The arc fault circuit interrupters?
Yes, sir.
Currently required in bedrooms, I think, is all...
They are required... kitchens, family rooms, dining rooms, living rooms, parlors, libraries, dens, bedrooms, subrooms, recreation rooms, closets, hallways, and laundry areas.
That's the 18 code.
That's 18.
That'd be the entire house.
2017 National Electric Code.
Okay.
That's what we're looking at, because they're a different year.
Okay, but that's...
Yes, all of those.
But right now...
Right now, we have adopted a local ordinance, going back to '02, that we have eliminated that requirement. Because back in '02, that was still, it was about 10 years into that technology, but it still wasn't, we didn't feel comfortable with it. There were still a lot of false trips and just frustrated people. So what I have done as part of this update process, I've gone to other cities and surveyed them to see, A, are you using the arc faults? Are you requiring them? And what is your experience with them? And across the board, it was, yes, we are using them. We do understand the problems that we had in the past with them, and we're not having the problems, we're not having the tripping problems that we did before.
Okay.
So we felt more comfortable to come out this time and say, "We're ready to go to that technology."
How does that affect retrofits?
That would affect retrofits in the case where a new circuit was put in.
Okay.
Okay, I can't go in and say, "The entire house, because it was built in 1940, but you want to put in three new circuits."
Right.
"I have to require it." And typically, that's the way we do on a remodel where we can. And I say that because if you take the GFCI, you can't do that with a house from 1930, because we didn't have the groundwork.
Right.
So in a case where we can, we will require it. We would require it with this code.
So, okay, so now that she said that, let me understand this. So we go into a house, and we find a Federal Pacific Circuit Breaker Panel, which, you know, we ask for those to be replaced the majority of the time. Those are being replaced. So now with that being replaced, we're going to require a shut-off, the shut-off switch for the electrical system, and we're going to require this arc system to be installed?
Again, if, let's take the arc fault circuit. If you are replacing circuits in a house, we're, yes, we're going to require those, right? So if you come in to get a remodel permit, typically, I'm looking at that area to which you're remodeling. I'm not going through the entire house, but that area to which you're remodeling, I'm going to make, I have to come up with it up to code.
I'm not talking about a remodel. I'm talking about a circuit breaker panel, we're completely, we're taking that circuit breaker panel, we're completely replacing it, we're not doing a remodel. So we're replacing a circuit breaker panel because it's a Federal Pacific or...
No to the arc fault, and yes to the disconnect.
Okay.
Okay? Because you didn't change out the circuits, I see where you're going, but you didn't change out the actual circuits, right? You changed out the panel. That's the service upgrade that would kick in the disconnect. And that's the other thing, and I talked to the committee about this, as the building official, every day I see weird situations. But as I told them, we will make a call on a case-by-case basis. We do that today, and we would expect to do it in the future, even with this requirement.
I guess...
I get into all kinds of scenarios, right? Where the disconnect literally would not be required. And so basically, on the disconnect, when it came down to it, the wording I put in there was, if it gets down to the point where you're literally moving it and you're extending that service wire...
Right.
It would kick in that requirement. But if I come out and everything else is fine, but it's just the mast, it's not related to those, the panel or the meter, it's all together, it's a system. If one needs to upgrade, the system needs to upgrade.
Okay. These are local ads that you're recommending?
These are local.
Right.
Local amendments.
Right.
These are not in the National Electric Code.
Correct.
The National Electric Code doesn't address it.
Correct.
And I've had KCPL now, KCPL come to me many times and say, "You guys require a disconnect, don't you?"
Yeah.
And I would say, "No, I thought you guys did." So we found that there was that gap there.
Okay.
But in the end, it is about just safely shutting down a structure, shutting the power down to a structure as quick as we can, so these guys can do their work.
Okay. Well, it goes to what we talked about earlier with the fire sprinklers, I guess, where some meetings ago, we talked about incentivizing builders to build at a price point, you know, one of the lower price points.
Right.
And this electrical ad, local electrical ad, could easily tack on 1,500, couple of thousand dollars.
I'm going to say...
Yeah.
Steve shaking his head down, he's a pretty reliable source there, but...
Well, I've checked the cost of the breakers...
Yeah.
...as compared to GE breaker.
Oh, you're talking about a full panel?
Yes.
You're talking about some difference?
No, I'm talking about a full panel.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Talking about the shut-off panel.
No, no. Yeah, I'm talking about an electrical project on a new house being built to the price point of 230,000 dollars, I'd say. Okay? If we implement these changes.
I guess what we use normally for most of our electrical in Sedalia, it's all required, and it's running about 1,500 for that component.
Yeah, about 15, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
So right now, when I swap a panel out, I'm looking at anywhere between 900 to 1,500, depending on what, who does it, and what they're asking for.
It does.
So am I now hearing, I'm looking at 2,400 to 3,000?
There's a lot of things, there's a lot of things that are going to go into that. Is it a 100 amp or is it 200 amp? At that point, too, it's, how much line are we adding to it? You know, are we adding more wire? We're adding more wire, right? We've got a disconnect, we're going to add a four wire. Well, every case is going to be different. So the electricians I've talked to basically say, you know, so for the 100 amp, I've got anywhere in the box at 100 bucks. The wire could range anywhere from 200 to 300 dollars. Yeah, you're talking hundreds to add to it. Now, when you go to the 200 amp, you're at 200 in the box, and you're 400 to 600 at the wire. Again, depending on how long that wire's going. So it's a little hard to nail down, but yeah, something's going to be a factor.
I don't have any more.
You're making my home inspections get more nervous.
Bad enough now.
What's that?
Said they're bad enough now, the home inspections are.
You're making me nervous.
All right, so that was first reading. Brett, we're going to, might be talking to you more in a minute here. Okay, we have first reading on an ordinance establishing minimum regulations governing the design, installation, alteration, repair, maintenance, and use of electrical conductors and equipment within the public and private buildings known as the Electrical Code of the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. That might be what we were just touching on. Any other questions on that? Next is a first reading on an ordinance adopting the 2018 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code, regulating the design, construction, installation, alteration, and maintenance of the building envelope in the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. Questions or comments on that? First reading of an ordinance adopting the 2018 edition of the International Existing Building Code, regulating and governing the repair, alteration, change of occupancy, addition, and relocating of existing buildings, including historic buildings in the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. First reading on an ordinance adopting the 2... I'm sorry, ma'am?
No, one of those, we talked about, I think, moving a building, was that the one that you just...
I'm sorry, what was the question?
On the ordinance that addressed moving a structure in the city limits?
A structure moving permit.
Yep. I had a couple of questions on that. I think the insurance requirement was like $100,000 liability?
I haven't done a structure moving permit in the city for probably over 15 years.
Oh, yeah, they're pretty unusual, I'd say, but...
Very unusual.
Yeah. But that just seemed kind of light to me when I read it.
Yeah, that ordinance is pretty involved.
Yeah.
There's that, there's, I know the police chief has to sign off, you know, look at route. I mean, there's a lot more involvement than just building department and that, but...
Okay. And the other was buildings under 120 square feet, is there a reason that we selected that number?
The building code has set that as any, so where there's a requirement for a permit, whether it be building or residential code.
Okay, all right. Like a storage shed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So just to clear, on 8 there, Section 105.2, work exempt from permit, it says, "We're adding any normal repair, replacement, that does not alter its approval, add to the system or make it unsafe." When you say add to the system, are we dealing with like electrical boxes where we're adding circuit breakers to the electrical box?
You're adding to the system, the way I understand it would be, you're adding circuits to the electrical, right? Or you're adding, yeah, box equipment in plumbing, the pipe supply, very much in that.
So if...
Adding to the system.
Okay, so if I want to add a circuit breaker to my circuit breaker box, I have to not pull a permit?
Anytime you add a circuit, yes.
But that's not a change, that's...
No, it's, no, I'm sorry, it's, that's been there now. That's in there now.
Okay.
That has not changed. So, I mean, I get that question a lot. I get a call, and they say, "This is what I want to do in my house." So I, you know, "I just want to put in a new toilet." That doesn't require a permit.
Right.
You want to move the toilet from this end to that end, you do, because you're adding to the system. You're adding drain, waste and vent, and you're adding water supply. So that's where that gets in, and electrical's the same.
So I have a panel that has 20 openings, and I'm only using 10 of them, and I add three circuit breakers to it, am I considering adding to the system?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have the first reading on an ordinance adopting the 2018 edition of the International Fuel Gas Code, regulating and controlling the design, construction, installation, and repair of fuel gas systems and gas-fired appliances in the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. First reading on an ordinance adopting the 2018 edition of the International Mechanical Code, regulating and controlling the design, construction, installation, and repair of mechanical systems in the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. First reading on an ordinance regulating and controlling the design, construction, alteration, and repair of detached one- and two-family dwellings and townhouses not more than three stories in height, known as the International Residential Code of the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. And the last one of the first reading, an ordinance establishing minimum regulations governing the design, construction, repair, and maintenance of plumbing systems, known as the Plumbing Code of the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri. Any further questions on any of those or comments?
I think we've got two information meetings scheduled.
Three.
Three, okay.
Three.
But they're scheduled after council takes action.
Correct.
Okay.
Those were educational, then?
Yes, we'd like to invite all of our contractors, especially all our electricians...
Right.
...in on some of these changes. Give them, you know, a chance to ask questions, get a full understanding of it, and give them that time to bid jobs in the future, to give my heads on the installments.
So if we've already done action on it, there's no tweaking it after that? There's no change in anything, right?
Those meetings are designed to be informational, of educating what the changes are, not seeking input on the proposed changes. Yeah, it's supposed to be, bring it into the ordinance, then we're going to go out to the community and, mostly it's the building community.
As with any ordinance that you adopt, you always have the ability to make amendments to that ordinance in the future.
Okay.
The way we took public input through this process was creating the committee, and we convene every six years with the panel of experts from around the area that work on this on a daily basis. It's a part of their livelihood. That's how we incorporate their opinions into the recommendations we've brought forward, and to get their input.
And I'd like to thank the committee for...
Oh, I would, too.
For your work, really. I know it wasn't easy.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a second reading of an ordinance to annex property located at the northeast corner of Highway 13 and Veterans Road. Second reading of an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territory into the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the northeast corner in the intersection of Missouri Route 13 Highway and Veterans Road.
This is the hearing that you held last, two weeks ago. The 14-day wait period from the state has passed. I did have an inquiry from Mike Rich, as noted in the staff report, just verifying the location. Again, the ownership confused the matter, but he didn't have any further statements on that, and I didn't have any other contacts, and we've received no written comments. So staff would recommend approval of the ordinance.
Luke said they'll be fast, second reading by title?
Just move the adoption.
Now move the adopt, okay.
And this is for adoption or rejection? Jacob?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have a first and second reading, an ordinance establishing an LI Light Industrial District for property recently annexed into the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Route 13 Highway and Veterans Road.
Staff would recommend approval of zoning this property light industrial. Be happy to answer any questions.
As I said, Bill, move the second reading by title. Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing an LI Light Industrial District for property recently annexed into the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Missouri Route 13 Highway and Veterans Road. This is for adoption or rejection? Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, under other business, I don't have any appointments tonight. There are a couple applicants. I want to take the opportunity to reach out to them. I did have Erica Collins reach out and ask because, for the Parks Board, because Ray has termed out and Cassie is outside of city limits, they have asked to remain on just until we can fill their positions, so they can at least meet and have a forum. So I think that should be fine, and then we'll go ahead and fill the vacancies as we get qualified applicants.
Who'd you say wants to stay on?
Cassie Gates and Ray Howe.
Cook.
Cook, I'm sorry, Ray Cook, his granddaughter's Howe. Yeah, so I think that we will continue that route until we can get some qualified applicants. I know Suzanne, I believe you've put it out in the chamber flash, and then I talked about it on the radio last week, so hopefully we can get some additional interest in applications. Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Nope, okay. Miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council. You want to have anything miscellaneous?
I mean, I want to thank Danielle and the Parks Board and her entire crew for, I mean, we put on a double A state tournament here in Warrensburg, and we had people all the way from St. Louis to Kansas City here, and, I mean, nothing but rave reviews. We had the state commander here, we had the Missouri commissioner was here, and all of them. Matter of fact, one of them said that one of the teams that was playing... Matter of fact, one of them said that one of the teams that was playing, if they didn't have a complaint, that was amazing, and they had no complaints other than a call they thought was blown, so, we can't control that one. But I definitely wanna thank your, you know, all your people, and be sure you pass, I won't be able to make it to Wednesday's meeting, I gotta be in Columbia, but please be sure to pass that on to, to Jeff and the crew and everybody that, that feel it was amazing. I mean, nothing but rave reviews.
I'd like to thank, uh, Public Works for reacting so quickly to open up the brush pile for us. I haven't driven by to see how, how much it's grown, but I understand it's getting pretty big.
It's grown, I was there all weekend, it's grown.
Yeah.
I watched trucks roll in.
Yeah, I hold several loads myself, so.
Yep.
I wanna say that's a costly reference between Parks and...
Parks, right. Right. It worked well.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I do have a question, um, just kind of today, this afternoon, I noticed there was a stop sign that's covered by a tree, the tree is on residential property, and you can't really see the stop sign until you're about that close to it, like really, really close. Who do we?
Let me know where it is, I hope I can hear it.
Thank you, PCA Road, turning into Fox Ridge. I, it was one where if you didn't know that was gonna be a stop sign, you wouldn't stop.
That's true.
Scary, yeah.
The four-way stop, yeah.
Yeah.
I just automatically stop, I don't even look for the stop sign, so maybe I am right.
Yeah.
I just never stop, so I don't even look about it.
Once I get this going here. Okay, we have city manager's report.
Uh, just a couple of things, staff is still working on coordinating a joint meeting between the street council and the main street board, as well as the city council and the, uh, Warrensburg Division of Business Bureau as well, so we're still working on that, trying to nail down schedules and those types of things. Finally, I guess, is with tonight's actions, if I remember correctly, the city has, has completed and complied with all conditions with regards to Dollar Tree, and, uh, that's been a long project, taking a lot of time and resources, not just by the city, but many of our partners and those types of things, and I just wanna express my appreciation to all those entities that helped make that a success. I have heard nothing but positive comments back, um, from the Dollar Tree representatives on how pleased they are and how well things have gone. One of our goals, uh, as a group, from an economic standpoint, was approved that Warrensburg is able to take on projects of this size and deliver, and do so admirably, and I think we've done that, but it took partnership from everybody, uh, the county, uh, KCPNL, the water district, um, I'm sure I'm leaving people out, you know, school districts, rural fire, um, everybody, all performed admirably there, and it's a, it's a huge success for, for the community, and we've been talking about it for a long time, and this is kind of our swan song, so to speak, on it, because we don't have any more actions on our agendas to take care of for that. But again, I just wanna appreciate, express my appreciation to everyone that helped do that, and especially our staff, and we had a lot of inspections out there, our building, well, I guess we didn't have inspections out there, but, fire department, fire department had some questions regarding, uh, sprinkler systems and those types of things, and we went out and helped test and make sure those things were operating properly, and walked through and all that kinda stuff, so. And then, uh, I believe the, uh, the gas station should be open soon, within the next few weeks, probably, as anticipated, and we look forward to that being a success as well.
Haven't noticed, has the sign gone up?
Yes.
The menu board even up.
The sign is up and it's actually...
The drive-through menu board is even up.
I saw that on Facebook, yeah, I saw that. I'll have to drive out there.
The sign was about seventy feet, not ninety feet.
Right.
You could tell, um, as soon as Dollar Tree opened, like that grand opening, they started really hustling over there at the, uh, gas station, 'cause it seemed a bit slower for a while, which I hear happens in construction, but then they really felt motivated that day, I think.
They turned the building over two, a week ago, on Friday, to MFA, to do the, uh, kind of the, setting the shelves and doing their IT work and stuff like that, so they're, they're in their final days.
They told us they hope to get there the sixth.
I've seen two people pull in thinking it was open already, so, that's good sign.
I just state that, 'cause, I mean, there's a lot of positive things happening, I, I follow social media and some of the conversations, cause member Jacobs has done a good job in responding on, on all of that stuff, appreciate that, but I think the council and staff have done a good job of trying to make sure economic development is successful here, and we do everything we can. We have, we have a box of rules we have to play within, but we try to do everything we can to stay within those lines and, and make things happen positively for our community. Again, just a, a swan song, thank you to everyone that was a part of the Dollar Tree project, it's great to have it open and operational, and, I'll take a little bit of a breath before the next one comes along.
I will, I will say Gary likes to, likes to, to throw the ordinance link out there in, in a lot of those conversations.
One other thing, I know Harold, you were out of town when Dollar Tree did the opening, um, last week or the week before, um, but we, I did get to go in and actually speak with the governor for a few minutes, and he had fantastic things to say about Warrensburg, just coming through, um, and then kind of the welcoming and the things he had heard specifically about staff from the Dollar Tree CEO, um, he, you know, Dollar Tree specifically said right to the governor how great Warrensburg city staff was in this project, and how, um, they almost had no choice other than to pick Warrensburg, because it was so, everyone was just so helpful with everything. So, um, that was pretty neat to hear that being said to the governor.
Thank you.
Matthew? That'll be a downer, Matthew.
I mean, this, this, uh...
He's been a voice gap jam.
Yeah.
I think it wore on that.
It was down, uh, revenue was down one point two percent for, for June, but overall, but overall, uh, year to date, we're up six and a half percent, so, it's really not a problem, and the, uh, revenue's coming in so far for July, it was really good. One other note, uh, we had to push back the N code ten, uh, installation, and so instead of starting this week, it'll start on the week of the sixth, it'll be, it'll be the sixth through the thirteenth. That's it.
Thank you. Barb?
I'll say that we think we're on target for our August fifteenth, um, internal deadlines for using the new building permit system, and a couple getting picked contractors, uh, we've got an electrician, a roofer, a home builder, and I think just a general contractor, who've all agreed to set up profiles in that system and getting picked a few types of permits that we have set up in there so far. Once we've worked through the bugs with them, and we know that they can apply and do your inspections and take payment and all of those things online smoothly, then we'll build out the other permit types and roll that out to the general public. So I think, um, earliest we would attempt to roll it out to the general public would probably be December, but we're on track for August fifteenth to start it with the handful of trial ones, so, and they're excited, so, so, that's good.
Very good. Slim?
Well, what the city manager said earlier, we give a final walk down inspection that we chose based on, uh, an area of the Dollar Tree project at this point, uh, we have very little deficiencies, uh, there's two items called out on the project, uh, I do want to compliment, uh, the staff, and so it was an excellent choice for the city to support this project, uh, you know, and, of course, they get that to do the truck stop there too, but that, uh, can only make a project go oximeter, so we, we, we chose well going ahead, that's how we have to do that work. We also Thursday are planning a pre-construction meeting, um, for maybe bait downtown case four project, um, so we hopefully get a timeline going on how this project is supposed to come together, so, more to follow after a meeting on Thursday.
Okay, you're gonna make sure they know when homecoming parade is?
Probably need Nick University to know when the, the project's gonna take place, probably the other way around.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Gary? Okay, Danielle?
As you know, we had a very exciting week last week, so I wanna say thank you first of all to Chief Lockhart and his crew for helping us on Thursday, and that was really, um, a big day for everyone, and having, getting our stuff back. Then we had the SNSL championship to meet, and that went really well, um, we had a lot of really good positive comments, um, and thanks to Chief Kushner for, um, helping us clean up today, there was a lot on the tennis courts, and they brought the truck out to help wash everything off. Um, and then just finally, an update on the playground, um, you should have the final pieces in at the end of this month, and then should begin construction, um, in the first couple of weeks of August.
Great. Joe? Craig?
Last week, myself, Doyle, another firefighter, Harold, went up to the factory on the aerial, we saw the bottom half, uh, it's essentially done, they had a little left to do, the top half, uh, was all but done, I guess, and it'll be going to the plant, but they get put together in the next week or two, and we were looking at a full week after labor to get it correct, for it to show up back up here and we'll do training, and in the week of Fire Prevention Week, we're gonna have a big open house and showcase all three of the public with what they got, and what it's all about.
When is Fire Prevention Week?
Second week of, I believe.
I did avoid the temptation to put the Jayhawk graphic on the truck. I did avoid the temptation to put the Jayhawk graphic on the truck.
He had Supreme right, and they do what he said, you know, he thought, it looked good right here.
Chief?
Um, I wanna invite all of you to a swearing in, uh, next Monday, three P M., at the Central Missouri Police Academy over on Ming Street, uh, we're gonna be swearing in Khalil Hood, uh, as our newest officer, seems like we just did, but we're getting to do it again, and, uh, we're gonna do it over there, because, so I'm gonna run ninety percent of my officers graduated from that academy, and so we're just wanting to kind of highlight, uh, the excellent quality of officer that they put out on the street by, uh, by doing one of our swearings in over there.
Very good, three P M.?
Three P M., yep, you're all invited.
Thank you.
That'll be on Alaska.
I, I would just like to say, as a downtown business owner, how appreciative everyone downtown was of the efforts of the police department over the course of the last couple of weeks, of keeping us all very informed and keeping us all very vigilant as to what was going on. They went the extra mile and made contact with everyone downtown, uh, and not only I appreciated that, but I know a lot of the other business owners that I've talked to were very impressed and appreciative of that effort, so I just wanted to say something.
And I can't take any of the credit, my staff did all of it, uh, they did all the heavy lifting. Uh, we do still have a lot of property, we got a lot that returned last week, we do still have some, so, uh, if any of you know downtown business owners who lost stuff, have them call us and make an appointment, then come by and look through stuff and see if we can, we have some of their stuff.
Right. Anybody else? Okay, we're going into closed session.
I gotta bring it back up here again. Oh, there we go, perfect.
Got it?
Some glasses, you know, these workers are probably big enough, yeah.
Vote to close part of the meeting pursuant to section six one zero point zero two one of the revised status of Missouri relating to legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving the city in any confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorney. Leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate with public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employees by a public government, governmental body where personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, documents or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected, and individually identifiable personal records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Just so you're all aware, this is important.
Yep, I've never used before.
I had fifty percent battery, I just didn't know how quickly it was turning.